Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to welcome you to the September 7th meeting of the Planning Commission tonight. And thank you so much for taking the time to join us either by Zoom or in person. We really do appreciate your time and your investment in the town of Scottsville. So, thank you very much. I'd like to ask that Mr. Ensworth, if you do mind, please let me know.
Happy to. Let's see, Commissioner Catalbiano?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Johnson?
No.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Lambert?
Yeah.
And Commissioner Strasner? Shannon, can you hear us? Shannon, we are calling roll. Are you here with us? Let me try her by chat, make sure she's picking up audio. Shannon, are you with us? We seem to be having some technical difficulties. I will send her a text message, see if we can get that sorted out.
Thank you, sir. Keep trying.
Thank you.
There she is. Shannon, can you hear us now?
Yeah, just entered text. Okay, she just wrote me back to say she can't hear. Let me see. Okay, Shannon, are you with us there?
Yeah.
Great, excellent. All right, Shannon is checking in remotely. We have Commissioners Catalbiano and Lambert there in person. You have a quorum.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
If you plan, you can give an agenda. I would like to know if there are any amendments or additions to the agenda as it's been presented. If there are no additions or amendments, I would like a motion placed to accept the agenda.
I make a motion to accept the agenda for September 7th as currently written.
I second.
Thank you. Pass. Let's move on to the second order of business tonight, which is to elect and select a new chairman for the commission. We've had a resignation from the previous chairperson. And so I'd like to open this for discussion.
Well, I make a motion to nominate Sherry for the position if she's interested.
I second that nomination.
Artwell, are you interested?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And opposed? Motion passed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Could I please be reminded, Mr. Wallace, of the exact length of the term?
Your officers' terms are every year. So you have an organizing meeting in July, beginning of the fiscal year, where you can reset officers.
Excellent. Perfect. And along with this, because I've just taken up for the chairman, Shannon, there's a vacancy in the vice chair. And I would like to open for discussion. This is called the Nono TV, and this has been taken into position.
I would volunteer to serve unless Shannon's jumping up and down for it. I'm happy to serve.
Okay, yeah, no, I would be happy to have you do that, so.
Excellent. So, do we have any motion?
I make the motion to nominate Lisa Catalbiano for Vice Chairman for the Ploning Commission.
I second you. I'll do that for you. Motion passed. Thank you, and thank you for your service. Appreciate it very much. And moving on to item number three, the review and the approval of the meeting minutes from August 2nd. Are there any changes, additions, or amendments to those minutes? I have an addition, Mr. Ensworth, actually. I believe that Matthew Johnson's name is omitted from the list of members to the commission on there.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Upper right-hand side.
Thank you very much. I will make sure to include him there.
Thank you. Excellent. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes as presented?
I make a motion to accept the meeting, or the meeting minutes from, see, from Monday, August 2nd, 2021, for the Scottsville Planning Commission.
Excellent.
I make a motion to second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And opposed? The motion passes. Thank you. All right, could we give, please, a report from the last town council meeting to my given task, Mr. Wallace?
I'd be happy to. I do see Mayor Smith in attendance online. Mr. Mayor, would you like to share anything with us?
Okay, no, I don't really have anything. I hope we can fill the vacancy as soon as possible. And that's on all of our boards, committees, and council itself. So I just appreciate everything the Planning Commission does, having served on it for a long time myself. I know it's not a thankful job at some times, and it's trying at some times, but y'all are doing a good job, and I appreciate it.
Council did act on a couple of grant-related matters that may come back around to planning commission. The first was accepting VDOT transportation alternatives grant to improve sidewalks. We had a plan for that pre-pandemic in 2019, and it was delayed during the pandemic to get started. The grant is $320,000 to improve sidewalks, more or less in the area between the farmer's market and the library, with the block of Bird Street between the library and the four-way South of Harrison Street, probably being the most important. That project may be three years altogether in design and construction, but that design will come back around the planning commission as it proceeds, so take a look for that. Town council also directed staff to apply for a couple of grants related to floodplain map. We're concerned about inaccuracies in the floodplain maps at the tire plant for one, but also in sections of the mid creek floodway where there's been change in the technology and development over the years. So they're looking for grant assistance to study those floodplain maps and introduce amendments if those are valid.
Thanks. If there's any questions about the council date? Excellent. We will move on to old business, which includes our zoning ordinances and their updates. That would include the planning, the planning unit developments, parking.
I'm sorry, Sherry, there, if I could, just as a point on the agenda, we've skipped five there, the matters from the public.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So many apologies to the public for that. I'm sorry. Okay, we'd like to hear from the public tonight. And I would like to just say ahead of time that after many comments, especially today, and I know that there's a lot of questions that you may have, there will be a public hearing on all of the things that will be discussed later in the special, from the special uses. So do be conscious of that and the time limitations that we have tonight. So, please, are there any matters to the public?
And just for the benefit of the microphone, take a seat one at a time and introduce yourselves for our recordings.
Thank you. Can you hear me through the masks at all?
Yes, just fine.
Okay, I'm Susan Cable. I've been here before, as you know. I want to thank Matt Wallace for giving us all neighbors a heads up on the freight train that's coming through. And I'm speaking specifically about the special use permits later in the agenda. And I tend not to talk about them specifically. That would be premature, but I do expect to have something to say about it at a time. Rather, I'm going to focus your attention on the fact that you have before you a loaded agenda. You're being asked tonight to consider three major land use planning proposals that can and will have a lasting impact on the future of Scottsville. One is the further evaluation of the planning unit development ordinance to govern future development on larger parcels of land. It was a proposal specifically recommended in the small, West Downtown Small Area Plan. A fact that's not mentioned in the special use permit on the tire factory. And it also would certainly be appropriate for the other sites being considered. We've got two applications for special use permits for the signing of a total of 72 residential dwelling units under the regionally established Village Residential Cluster zoning ordinance. One of them are 48 houses of the tire factory, and that will have a major, major impact on the store downtown in terms of traffic and other impacts with that many new residential units. And the bloodline site is calling now, at this point, for nine acres out of 43 acres in the headwaters of the Mid Creek watershed. I can't stress that strongly enough. As some of the people will remember, Mid Creek in the past was the source of devastating flooding for the whole time. I think the timing is exquisite. Only a little over two months ago, at the June 21st meeting, you, the Planning Commission voted to deny a recommendation for rezoning for tire factories. And of course, the town council overrode to ask to approve it at the same night. At that time, there were no development plans that were known to the Planning Commission. Now at the midnight hour, eve of a three-day holiday, a commission meeting scheduled for the following day, with key members now gone from the scene, you are being presented with two major proposals. Some might say that this is a sandbag agenda. You, ladies and gentlemen, you have under chapter 15.2 of the zoning of the code of original, you have 60 days to consider a proposal for land development within your jurisdictions before you are legally required to make any recommendation. You have the prerogative and the responsibility and the duty to your fellow citizens to take these 60 days to discuss, to consult with experienced and professional planners at the Albor County Planning Commission, County Office of Community Development, UVA Department of Rural Planning, VDOT. This is a town that is rich with the land use planning experts. You can also seek legal counsel from the town's attorney and others should you wish to second the thing. So I really urge you to take that time, short of standing on this chair and yelling. And there are those who know very well that the table of the food map. I really implore you to take the time to educate yourself about options and pressing the pressure to make an early decision. Be thoughtfully deliberate about the best outcomes for the future of Scottsville.
Thank you. I'm the high sen. I live in Scottsville. And I've been involved with the Small Area Plan and the plant development for a number of years. So I'm not going to speak on that primarily, but my concern, I've raised this before, is that I have concerns about the transparency of communication with the public about such a major undertaking that a lot of people don't even know about. Like Susan said, this is last minute, we've realized that. And I'd like to see, and I'm glad there's some town councils and the mayor here, but see if there's a way that the town can communicate and be open with the public about what's going on. The website needs updating tremendously. The future land map still lists the factory as heavy industry and lists the hillside as light industry. So I find most of my information on the website, and I look at it, and I have to search it out, and I can't find it. And if I do, it's outdated. So if it's not heavy industry and it's not light industry anymore, then I think that needs to be noted. But maybe not. If it is light industry, then I think it's, then you can't even look at that development there. So I think that needs to be updated. The other thing, and I've mentioned this over time, I can't find the minutes, the last minutes for town council and the planning commission were in April. So it's really hard to find out what's going on in the town. And I don't do Facebook, and even when you do Facebook, you don't see that much. And I don't think, Facebook's a private entity, and I don't think it should be the way of communicating with the public. So I'd like to find out a way that the town can communicate with the public and put notices up about these prints and all these materials that are around here. put that on the website so the public can actually find that and look at that ahead of time. And the other thing, the last thing, I'd like to see if there's a way they could send information to the public about some sort of e-newsletter or some sort of information about what's going on. I mean, usually you see the agenda, and that's sometimes late in coming, you can see the agenda, but you have to search for that sometimes and sometimes that's only a day or two before the meeting. But I really think that some sort of way of communicating with the public to let them know what's going on, to have the website updated and accurate and to have the minutes would be really valuable for the public.
My name is Matthew Holt and I know these times in the very court. Just want to point out that the proposals are 12 and 14 lines. And it takes Matt, town administrator, how many pages? 12, 13 pages is ready to explain what's in here. I really think we should hear from them instead of us trying to interpret what this means.
Thank you very much.
There are a few members of the public online. If you'd like to participate in the Matters from the Public comment, please indicate in the chat or raise a hand. Thank you for joining us online. Thank you. We'll move on.
Excellent. Item number six, old business, discussing the zoning ordinance updates, land unit development, parking, and also the glare section from the question.
I don't have much more staff work on these in the past month. Haven't changed the content of the information that's before you. What's in the packet here is the same as what we reviewed last month. But just to digest some of this content, which maybe does gain some greater urgency if it's something that you want to use in current development planning or in the near future. As we discussed last month, it's good to have more of an audience here. Thank you. The planned unit development ordinance is a different way of working in our zoning that provides, excuse me, more creativity and design for engineers and investors, but also stricter control for planning commission and town council. In conventional zoning, there's a mix of by right uses, which one can do on property without any special permission, and uses by special permit, which are the applications that we have tonight that give you some additional uses that require review within the same kind of standards of a list of uses and how big the things can be, that sort of thing. Planning unit development sets up more of a case by case review where many of those stricter guiding principles go away and a designer is invited to tailor a mix of uses or different sizes that they think is maybe more creative and more cost effective for them. And then planning commission and town council can use a set of criteria to evaluate that and give it a case by case review. It has been used in many similar localities as an effective negotiating tool, but it's not something the town has set up in the past. We had a little bit of help in drafting this some years ago from our regional planners at the Thomas Jefferson Planning District Commission. And most of what you see before you is their work from 10 years ago with some modified goals related to our town comprehensive plan that we have in place now. So it remains available for you to consider, but sits as a priority in zoning updates that's certainly not required, but is a tool that you could use. What else did commissioners think about this in the end of the month?
I think it's a nice idea to have, I mean, we have two large areas of land and they would make a significant impact if they were to be developed. So it would be nice to have, if we're going to be faced with an application, I'd like to see something very comprehensive if we're talking about developing one or both of those plots of land. I think a HUD would be really useful.
Mrs. Draster, do you have any additions?
I also agree with what Lisa just said. So I think that would be very useful to have.
Could I propose that they'll have a special work session around this so that we can do a concentration actually to within the next couple of months? Something that given what's on our agenda, it would be who messes, I think, and for, you know, just the town's piece of mind that may address this fully and look at it with some serious consideration.
Sure.
Something that comes together overnight, though. This would be a long discussion.
Especially to kind of the meat of the content of which, which standards do you want to have suspended? And which standards do you still want locked in place as hard guardrails? And then your criteria for scoring means, what are the, what are the values that you're going to be looking for in approving or rejecting a special design? So that it's not capricious, but you can say, here are seven or 10 community standards and this proposal only meets four of them and that's not good enough, so we reject it. That's going to make the decisions clear, but it matters a lot what those are.
Exactly. And just for the general peace of mind for the public who are here joining us and those who aren't soon, could you please explain that it blew not having a HUD in place? Because it's not currently something that's contained within the comprehensive plan. What other safeguards do we have to make sure that as we go down this path, that town has, the town council has oversight, has veto power, has directive over these issues?
I think you'll see it in the rest of this evening's agenda, that the special use framework, that's the subject of the two applications tonight, is subject to a planning commission recommendation and town council approval. There are by right options under our existing zoning, but as you've seen from the town's history, those by right development options haven't gone very far. So special use permits create some incentives for development consideration, but if town council doesn't think those are in the overall best interest of the town, they don't know all of them. So the special use permit process can be very strict. It gives room for conditions, room for modified plans. And then the last word comes in planning commission's recommendation, council's vote.
Thank you. Appreciate that very much. Are there any other comments from commissioners? Thank you. We'll move on to new business. And Mr. Last, would you like to introduce what we're going to be addressing tonight and introduce our special guests?
Okay. Since we speak of the special use permit applications, there are two before us now. And the public comment is absolutely correct. This is an unusual day. And planning commission has not had an agenda like this in some years with two special use permit applications and a significant number of homes that would have a large impact. So I definitely respect the need for careful evaluation of these. They came in on Tuesday of last week. And so I sent you, what I'll admit, is a cursory planning staff report. And it needs, it needs further input from our friends at Virginia Department of Transportation, Admiral County's review of stormwater quality. And I expect lots of public input from our friends in the environmental community, affordable housing advocates. It's a big issue and one that Scottsville faces maybe every 10 years speaks to the moment of what we're dealing with. Our applicant is Mr. Justin Chimp from Chimp Engineering, working under contract with Virginia Land Company, which is the owner of both of the properties in question. The special use permit application that they're looking for relates to cluster development on Village Residential. Village is the town's middle density of zoning district. It's not the downtown core, but it's not the rural area either. The stated goal in the ordinance and our comp plan is that Village Residential is where we expect most of the town's future population growth to happen. And the clustering provision allows for houses to be closer together when there are public utilities to serve them in order to more efficiently use our infrastructure. I think at that, I'll let Mr. Shimp describe his projects. And I have your past files with me here. So if you want me to screen share those, I can, but I don't want to take it away.
All right. Thank you, Matt. Good evening, everyone. It's Justin Shimp, engineer for projects, representing Virginia Land Company. We have two applications before you, special use permits under the ordinance that was adopted a couple of months ago for this cluster development. There's a lot of good things about this form of development and efficiency of land use and getting a more affordable housing type on the ground. But I think we should pick one and start with that. Matthew, of preference, which one we want to start with?
We have Blenheim listed on our agenda first, so.
Okay, let's start with that. If you could screen share the application plan we turned in.
One second, please. Matt, do we have the applications? Because I don't have the map package.
Oh, so cover sheets? Okay.
I have the maps, but not the actual application.
Justin, let me show the cover sheet on this here first.
This shows the agent's contact information and the owner. The request made is a special use permit. The parcel that we're talking about is just a portion of this very large parcel located near this intersection. The request is for cluster development within Village Residential. And the owner is Charles R. Teeney.
Okay, so we have the application, but not the cover page.
That's right.
Matt, you're speaking of our brief narrative. That, yeah, there we go. That describes just the basics of what we're posing. We can go with that. I think the map is the most useful way to describe and understand what the specifics are.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, very good. So as was noted, this section of the upper part of this large parcel is 146. I think it's about 50 acres is zone Village Residential. And under the ordinance adopted, the landowner has the option of filing a special use permit. And just so, you know, I think folks, I heard some of the comments earlier. This is really only a very preliminary discussion. There'll be public hearings, may multiple public hearings on this. We are accustomed to making these applications. We listen in on what the concerns are of residents around, try to understand what issues can be mitigated. We work through the process. So this is not something that we expect. We'll turn in, you guys will say, oh, that looks good and approve it. There can and should be a lot of thoughtful discussion on these things. But it is important to find ways to get new housing out there for folks. It really is a tremendous crisis right now. It's a huge problem that affects a lot of people that are forced into housing. They can't afford or paying 50% of their income towards housing. And one of the opportunities that exists is in a place like Scottsville where you actually have water and sewer infrastructure available, a lot of capacity. And you have sites like this and also the upper Bird Street where you have development opportunities that can be, if done intelligently, provide the opportunity for folks to get into a house and be part of your lovely community. I think that would be why there's always a concern about impacts of people coming in. There's also to be remembered that, you know, new neighbors, new friends come in, new people that run into the park. And these can be good things. And so the balance here is to figure out a way to come up with developments that achieve both mitigate the impacts and provide a quality housing location for folks. So this one is a little different than the Bird Street. This is less of a urban sort of location. We're posing more of a rural section street here, similar to the neighborhood next door. So this would not have sidewalks and street trees, for example. This would be more of a traditional neighborhood section. And go to the next page, Matt. Yeah. So here's the layout. You'll see we have an entrance off Blenheim Road. And then you'll see in green, we have an easement that connects to the trail system. There is somewhere down the page, I guess it may show off the page, but Matt's familiar with this and we'll have to fine tune these details as this moves on. But there's an easement up a sewer line where folks can walk down to the park. And so we would pose connecting that from Blenheim Road and from this neighborhood so that residents of the neighborhood could walk down and take advantage of that open space and park opportunity. So these lots are set at around 60 feet wide. So this is a lot that is, we have probably a 40 foot wide house, 30 to 40 foot wide house, probably a one or two car garage, a home for, you know, families or folks wanting to retire and downsize into a community like Scottsville. So this is really a first stab at this type of product here. Many of you will know there's a recorded plat of, I forget how many lots, maybe 25 or 30 lots adjacent that was never built. And part of that is that was built on an old, kind of a, it's, yeah, this neighborhood here. So that was, you know, two plus acre lot subdivisions. And those really are difficult to build. The infrastructure cost to build housing these days is so expensive. Building roads, stormwater facilities, all the environmental controls that are reasonably required add the cost. And that creates a difficult situation to develop those sort of lots. And also, honestly, it's a bit inefficient use of land in a place like Scottsville where you can have a connection to a meaningful downtown and a natural area and park area that town has. We think it's better to have smaller clustered lots, leave the more open space and have those connections available for folks. So if you go back to the plan there, Matt. So that's the basics of this application. This is, you know, more development could occur here in the future for it to occur in this form, there have to be another special use permit and another set of public hearings to achieve those things. So what's in front of everyone now are just these 24 lots. And we think there will be a good mix along with the more, we'll talk about in a minute, the Bird Street, which would be a little smaller product, a little different type product. But we think bringing a little bit of both to town provides opportunity for folks with different housing needs. So that's the reason for this particular layout and it sort of fits into the neighborhood there with the more rural section street and design. So I think that's enough for summary. I'm sure there are some questions. I'd be happy to answer them.
Matt, could you zoom back out a little bit on the map here, please?
Shannon, were you looking for the other page?
I was just looking at the map just to see. I'm just looking at how the green space connects with the neighborhood and then the existing neighborhood next to it, just out of curiosity. Just out of curiosity.
Justin, you have this trail easement running around behind the existing houses and connecting to the existing sewer line trail, right?
Correct. We would run in within Dr. Hertz's property around to the existing easement and then down. So it's entirely within our own, you know, land to create that connection and that easement.
The, the current trail runs along the sewer line out of the Van Cleef Nature Area property, which is this.
Right.
And then stays on this side of the creek, more or less here. And there's a gate at this corner property here. So a resident in the Pine and Holly neighborhood can follow this trail and get down to the park about a mile from this community to downtown. And your proposal on the new one is to not go through Pine and Holly, but rather around the back with the new trails to make that same connection. Is that right?
That's right. Yeah, those folks in the neighborhood, of course, would still use the connection they have, but we would kind of go around that the back through the open space or through the residue development.
Okay. And so we're looking at 24 units in here?
Yes, that is the proposal. 24, 60-foot wide. It's going to be a single-family detached houses in this proposal.
And what would those run roughly?
What was that? Is it for sale, finished product, community cost?
Yes.
Cool. That's a fine question. I, I think we're looking at like a $350,000 sort of range for these. I suspect where they'll land. That fluctuates, of course, the market, but that is sort of the, that would be the expectation, I think.
Why do you think it's, what makes you say that?
The, the pricing?
Yeah. What goes, what goes into it?
Well, you've got, you know, there's the cost of the lot to be delivered to the builder. And then the size of the house that somebody, I think we're probably looking at, this is going to be, you know, 1,600, 20, 200, 2,400 square foot sort of homes. So I'm guessing these are, you know, three years, small, smaller homes, maybe more traditional of what you've seen in, you know, in developments like Scottsville. If you look at what building was, house building was, you know, 40, 50 years ago, people commonly lived in 1,500 square foot homes, and then homes grew over time, in some ways, I think in unsustainable way. And so I think that you'd see here, uh, houses that were smaller, but, you know, sufficient for a family of two, three, four kids, but also for somebody who wanted a, a master bedroom on the first floor, you know, single level living, who wanted to move into the community too. This, this size lot and that price point kind of fits both those potential residents.
So we, Justin, we, we have certainly interest in providing housing opportunities for people at, at different incomes. 350,000 is, is hard for some.
Yeah.
Do I hear you saying that it's, it is difficult to build a new detached house much less than that? You've got pretty small lots here and no, no sidewalks. Is this about the bottom of what new construction can be expected to do?
For, for a detached house, I think that's about right. You know, some of the builders can get that down a little bit, but honestly, you know, sticks, bricks and labor are all very expensive and going to continue to rise. Now, if we get it over to the Bird Street, you get into like a detached, a attached, a duplex kind of product. You can get, you can push that price point down. But at the end of the day, if you look at materials, while wood has come back down, it's still going to be expensive. But, you know, there are opportunities to work with other housing partners, folks like Habitat and things. And they haven't specifically said this parcel. They looked at the other parcel. And that's really the best opportunity to deeper affordability is with one of those partners. Now, in the context of, you know, Charlottesville area, if you can buy a new house in Albemarle County, in a nice community for 350 or a little bit less, say, that's honestly quite a reasonable, a reasonable price for a home. It gets them the opportunity to get into Albemarle County School System and probably a shorter commute than where they are living currently. Uh, and puts them in a spot they can, you know, enjoy the businesses you have downtown and things like that, be part of that community. So while certainly it's not inexpensive, I, I would not want to come here and say that you could, you know, create housing for $200,000, a, a house in this kind of circumstance. You, you just can't. The materials and the labor to build the house are that much, and the lot has to be purchased and the road has to be built and not shown here are stormwater management facilities that are very expensive. Even the cost of a simple road has skyrocketed over the past number of years. So we would see if, if this, if these were in like the surrounding Albemarle area, let's say if you went up Route 20 to a project I did, 65 lots on Route 20 South in Albemarle, closer to Montreal High School, same size lots, probably a $550,000 house.
He said 1,600 to 2,200 square feet of house. Okay, thank you, thank you.
Mr. Chimp, is the 350,000, is that the starting price for a 1,600 square foot home? Or is that the top price for a 2,400 square foot?
It'll depend a bit on the builder. I have, I have to look at some of the, you know, there's no builder set here. People have a, some people are interested. But it would depend a little bit. I, I think that's probably going to be a median. You can, you should be able to buy a house below less than that, and you could buy a house with more options for a little more than that, I think is what you'd expect to see.
All right. We haven't done this in a while. And, and the, the housing, the construction business is tricky. Tell me about your role in it. You're an engineer, not a carpenter. So what, what are we doing in this application? And how does it get to? There's a realtor in the audience, and how does it get to move-in day from where you sit?
So the, you know, it was very early on the process. We'll have a number of, you know, obviously, public hearings on this, and ultimately, the town council has to make a decision on if this is a, a good development. We think it is. I think there'll be a lot of people who would be excited to move here. But stepwise, we, we get a zoning approval, which would be the town council approving the special use permit. We then submit a road plan to VDOT to approve the construction of the, the road itself. We have stormwater management and erosion control plans that go to Albemarle County, and they regulate essentially stormwater, make sure that we do not cause downstream flooding or other impacts related to the development. Once those plans are approved, you go into construction. You can build the lots, build the road. A builder comes in, sets up a, you know, a model home, probably lot one, a lot 24, right, the entrance? And interested buyers can come check out the home, put, you know, reserve a lot for themselves. They buy it from the builder, and then the builder takes their six months or so to build the house, and somebody moves in. Now, that's the process from here to a new resident of the town.
Thank you. That, that helps. And I've worked a little bit with VDOT road planners on some kinds of traffic study when we've had a single building changing use, and we ask, is this driveway safe? We haven't done this together on road planning because we haven't built any roads in the time that I've worked here. But we've let VDOT know that we got this permit in, and they're, they'll be able to answer some questions for us, but other parts of the analysis, they don't care to even start until the zoning approval happens. If we, if we don't know, there's no work for them to do. Justin, is it fair for us to work together on preliminary input from VDOT about things like traffic counts and intersection safety before we do a zoning approval? What do you think you could get from VDOT?
Yeah, certainly, it's, it's a reasonable question to ask. Now, the reality is, just so everyone's aware out there, let's say that if the town just thought, oh, we want to approve 500 units here, right? And we did not have an entrance that met VDOT standards, they would say, we don't care if the town approved. You are not getting an entrance, or you might get an entrance for 50 or 20 units, whatever it met the applicable standard. So there's a, the zoning does not obligate VDOT to any particular approvals. They have their standards, and you essentially, to meet them or not. And from all the preliminary work I've done here, I see no issues with that entrance location. But typically, they will ask us for a turn lane warrant analysis to make sure a turn lane would not be required. I do not think it would be for this few of a number of lots. If in the future, the, let's say these were approved and there was a request for more, VDOT would look at each incremental amount and say, well, now you have to put a turn lane in or whatever was the appropriate safety mechanism. So there is a review at the sort of road plan stage, which is independent of zoning, but it's certainly reasonable. And we would not want to go through the process of getting an approval and then have VDOT say, you can build three houses here, right? You don't have the required site distance. So it's appropriate. That's usually the scope during this sort of phase is a basic question of is there a safety issue? And then would there be a capacity issue somewhere down line? So for example, would the folks from here create some sort of impact up or downstream? I think VDOT is going to say no impact in this case, but certainly we should hear it from them to make sure they agree with that. We don't see, we, we do this often. And we don't see this as the kind of project that would really create any sort of meaningful change and traffic delays or things of that nature. But again, VDOT will, will opine on that. And if they feel there's something that warrants a more detailed study, they will let the town know, and the town has the option of requiring that study or not, basically.
Can you remind me what the, Matt, can you remind me what the size for clusters is in our, in our Village Residential?
That's right. This is, it's a, it's a more recent change to the zoning ordinance that changes this cluster process a little bit. So this is where the zoning ordinance lives online, just when you do the tour. Mr. Heisen, thank you for the note about the map. I'm not a map maker, so I have a, I have a work request out to the Planning District Commission to help me update these maps with our changes. They are working on that. Thank you. So the, the category that we're looking at is cluster development where public water and sewer is available. The density is four units per acre, and the minimum lot size is 2,500. The size that is proposed here is closer to 7,000, is that right?
That's about right. Yes, these are 6,000 to 8,000 square feet.
40-foot minimum frontage. This proposal is 60-foot minimum frontage. 33% open space requirement. You have a little bit more than that.
Mr. Chimp, can you please just kind of explain maybe the thought process with your company and with your client in presenting the 24 lots instead of maybe a broader plan that shows the use of the entire piece of property that's out there? Do you see this as a phase one construction? Do you see this as a, let's test the waters? What's the thinking on your front with your team in proposing this now?
Sure. Well, certainly, we, it is a phase one, but, you know, phase two, it could be many years away. You know, I think that we don't expect, I think sometimes it's a thought when, you know, the community will see, oh, 24 lots are approved, therefore 24 houses are going to show up overnight. We, we, you know, from our standpoint, somebody who wished that were the case, but that's often wishful thinking. So, you know, we would expect to see 24, and over the years of that builds out, we would gauge sort of the opportunity for the next set. And I think in some ways, well, it is nice, I think it's a fair question to ask, like, what's this going to look like at the end of the day? For all 100 and some acres, if I told you what I thought was going to look like now, the odds are I'd be wrong. You know, just over the time it will take to build this out, that will probably change. And many times I've gone back, I think in Albemarle County, there's like a, about a 20-year lifespan of rezoning. Everything that's 20 years old, we've gone back in essentially and had to amend zoning or the concepts that were approved 20 years ago because they've proven to be just different. The market has changed, people's needs for housing or business have changed. And so I think to, you know, answer your question directly, yes, to phase one. And we certainly imagine a similar pattern of development, you know, 60-foot wide lots, 7, 8,000 square feet could be built more, more than we built on this parcel. But to think that, you know, 100 or more might happen the next five, 10 years, it seems unlikely to us. And so we thought we'd test the waters or something that was a small amount, but a, a meaningful amount of homes and, and go from there and see what the demand was like and see if the feelings of the town was about something of this scale.
Thank you. I appreciate that explanation. And with that thought in mind, that it could be down the road with developing the rest of the property, how does the sewer easement play into that? And do we have, do we have an assurance that that would be given to this city as in perpetuity? That no matter if the, the rest of the property is developed or not developed, that would be protected as an easement to get to Van Cleef? How is that going to be handled exactly?
So in this situation, a special use permit, you know, you can put conditions on that. And so what we would expect is the condition of approval, the town would say, ah, we're approving this. However, this easement from the neighborhood to the Van Cleef must be maintained. Now, if we were to go back and ask to amend that later, we would have to show, say, a rerouting of that or a new trail if we had to move that for some reason. And we've tried to lay it out in a way that it would be sort of permanent in its location. Like, that's probably not an area we would necessarily develop in the future at all, where it goes down behind those lots. But essentially, the special use permit could require that to remain and would prevent any future developer from removing it. Uh, and then it could only be moved with the approval of a amended special use permit for the town that allowed some different connection.
Justin, you mentioned that that stormwater phase of county review as well, and that's, that's clearly very important. This, your, your proposal is on the furthest uphill and flattest part of this whole site. It goes down and begins to develop ravines. There's an old farm pond here, and the tributaries to what become McCreve, which is a, a high-hazard dam and an important habitat in town. We, we fish in it, and when it turns into a flood situation, it's scary. I have never worked with Albemarle County's stormwater review on greenfield construction like this. What should we expect from their review and stormwater mitigation on this site?
Sure. They, the, the county enforces their water protection ordinance, which is, which is a combination of local county regulations. And there's the Department of Environmental Quality, if the state has published a comprehensive stormwater requirement. And so we would be required to meet those. And essentially, the, the criteria is basically this, for a one-year storm event, which is a rainfall of about three inches over 24 hours, you are required to reduce the amount of runoff from your development or in volume, or drastically reduce the, the flow rate. So for example, in a development like this, we would probably have to reduce the, the sort of peak flow rate of that one-year storm by about 50%. So that, the principle of that is it protects where the creeks start to form. It's that one-year storm event that will often cause the erosion of them. Because you, those are the storms that happen more frequently. So those are essentially designed to be reduced with the development. And then there's a 10-year storm event, which is starting to get into the flood frequency sort of range. The 10-year storms, we have to prove we have no increase over what is the pre-development condition. So you're basically saying you can't make that any worse or higher flow rates. And then you get into the, the 100-year and above, you talk about like the, the dam hazard classifications. I do have some experience with, uh, working with classic dams with hazard classifications that are DCR regulated. And they generally work, if you're particularly a high-hazard dam, you're looking at the PMF storm, which is like 30 to 35 inches of rain over 24 hours. And essentially, it doesn't matter. When you get into that sort of framework, there, you know, whether your land's developed or not, you get tremendous amounts of runoff from those storms. Because basically, after the first three inches or so, four inches in the forest even, everything that falls everything that falls from the sky runs off a hundred percent down into the creeks, right? As a, uh, the soil has a certain capacity for storage and then these PMF storms blow that out of the water completely. So yeah, those are scary events. They don't happen often, but they do happen. Uh, we had one in Nelson County in like 69, right? Hurricane Camille, like that hit Scottsville too, although not with that magnitude of flooding, but essentially when you get to those levels, it, it doesn't matter a whole lot. But for the lower storms, the more typical rainfall events, there's a protection built in in the county's ordinance. Whether you build three houses or a hundred that you have to follow.
And so this proposal doesn't include a, a retention basin or a rain garden or trees planted downstream? Or do you propose to figure that out later? Or, or do you claim that none of that kind of stuff will be needed for something this size?
Oh, it'll all be needed. We just, we wouldn't typically show that in the zoning plan because it's a, it's a requirement again, whether we built the, the kind of buy right layout on this or a cluster or you rezoned it to something else, or if you, you know, put a big commercial development, industrial development, the requirements are all the same. Uh, and so we, we would not say show it in a zoning plan, but you can, you know, know that they will be enforced by the county.
It's, it's important for us to know. So I, I think that, so Alamo won't review a Scottsville project any differently than they do anything else anywhere else in the county. But for the purpose of us making a decision, I might ask about what might come of this and what sorts of things do so that we know what we're doing for the creek. But it won't be, it won't be my decision about whether they build a pond or a rain garden or not.
Could you also confirm, deny, whatever, in whatever direction is necessary, that your intention on these lots is single family homes? It's not duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes. It's, it's simply single family homes to start.
Yes, but this, for this particular of a Blenheim project, we are contemplating all single family homes here.
Are you interested in that being a condition? They've, they've applied as though that were the only thing. The zoning does allow that mix of types. And if they hadn't specified it, I don't know that I would have raised it.
Does it limit our partners, with other partners that have Habitat for Humanity or other, like Piedmont? They need to come in and partner on some of those lots?
It does. Um, it's easier for Habitat to work on a duplex format. They like those. In Crozay, Piedmont Housing Alliance has a cluster of a couple dozen fourplexes, where they've got their clients living across the street from $800,000 houses. It's easier for those partner agencies to save money by sharing walls. Yeah, that's carpentry.
Yeah, I think for our purposes, we, you know, I don't see a real necessarily need to restrict those in that we're asking for 24 units here, right? So if, if a couple have become a duplex, there's not more homes. There's might, they might be a little bit less expensive. Likewise, a quadplex would take up essentially four lots, the zoning is. So again, that's probably, just, just to be a product, that's probably not what happened here. But certainly it could in case of a partner like Habitat comes along and they said, hey, could we get, you know, two duplexes here? We would hate to, you know, shut the door on that. Cause I don't particularly see any change in impacts from a couple duplexes versus two, you know, single family homes, for example.
No, I, I see. You're, you're counting building rights. So if somebody wanted to buy two lots and build a duplex like that, that's what they could do, but they would, but that's how it would have to look. Right? Cause you, you've got the, you're, you're counting, you're counting, the approval is for 24 dwellings. So this would be two, two doors and it would require two of the building rights.
That's right. Yeah. We're 24 dwellings in that nine acres. So that, that could be in theory, six quadplexes. Would be the same number of dwelling units. Again, you wouldn't, I think with this layout, with this location, with the street network proposed, that's probably not the, it's not the probable type of development. But again, particularly the case of the duplex, I don't, we want to preclude that from happening.
Okay. That makes sense.
Mr. Scherzer, do you have other questions about this property?
Not at this time. Thanks.
Okay. Mr. Schiff, would you like to go on to the Bird Street property plan and address that?
Certainly.
Now, if you can bring that one up.
The application form here is the same, the same agent, the same primary property owner, Virginia Land Company, although it's held as Upper Bird Street LLC, that's Virginia Land Company. The, um, the owner, Charles Hert, is the same. The zoning request is the same, special use permit with cluster development in the, in Village Residential. Again, they're only using a portion of their parcel as, as we'll show. The narrative is brief and describes a portion of the, of the property at Bird Street, uh, towards the edge of town, cluster development on a 12 acre portion of the plant. 12 times four being 48, 4,000 square foot lots, which is a bit smaller than the other that you saw previously. Expanding a road network, maintain open space, promoting walkability and citing the comprehensive plan and the West End House smaller. And concept is here. Mr. Schiff, would you like to describe your work?
Sure. Thank you. Yeah. So the area in orange you see there is the 12 acre portion of the, the 19.7 total. And this, we had actually some, you know, we've been looking at this and discussing it with Matt for a short period of time and a few weeks or a month now. You know, I, I was not just new to Kelsey, my associate who does a lot of these planning projects and had further discussions. I mean, we had originally proposed to also look at 24 units here. And I think, and there was the feedback we got was, well, in this particular parcel, you know, what does that, what's the rest of it going to look like? And so we have proposed 48 in this instance, because it, the, it's a good stopping point essentially. It defines the, the, the first section of the parcel, I think can be clearly defined as well will be its, you know, forever pattern of development. Uh, forever, I should say, the life of these houses, you know, decades. And then leaving the area on the west end of the pond, that is in white in this picture, the sort of future development zone with a, with a road stubbed out to that. And such time in the future, we will be able to apply for a, a special use permit for, uh, cluster development there or proceed with buy right development, or maybe it doesn't get developed. Ever. I mean, I'm sure it will at some point in time, but again, these things take long periods of time to come to fruition. So if you want to go to the next page, Matt. So here's the, the basic layout and the principle of this was twofold. One, so on the case of the lots, and there should be, is there one more, is one more page, right, Matt? I think that has the, uh, yes, this is probably a little better. So this, this is the same map, which was showing kind of the street tree sidewalk configuration. So the two things we on here, one is on Bird Street, the lots 27 through 36. Those are designed, they would be, you know, facing the street, but if you, many of you are familiar, there's kind of a grade change there and that sits up above. So the thought is we would have a, kind of an alleyway behind. So those houses would face the street. They may be, some of them may be six or eight feet above the street. But they'd be set back a little bit off the street. And so that would be the, you know, typical aesthetic of other neighborhoods, the houses there facing the street without necessarily on parking in front, parking behind. We'd be able to build a sidewalk along Bird Street there. Across the, from the special use permit process. Again, those folks might have to go down a set of stairs to get to those, but it'd be a connection from their house out, maybe the walk around the back also of the sidewalks. Then we have an internal road network that is designed to get us sort of up and over to the area behind the pond, using these smaller lots. These are 4,000 square feet, essentially 40 by 100, most of them. And these would be either small, single family, like a 22 foot or 24 foot wide house or a duplex, or it could even be a, you know, a quadplex type situation. So again, asking for 48 dwelling units, but the actual mix here could and probably would vary. This, for 48, I think over time, you would see probably some builders with different type of units offered here that might invoke some maybe single family, some duplex and maybe even the quadplex type scenario. So these would be more urban streets, sidewalks, uh, street trees. When the lots get narrower, the economies of building that make a little more sense. Uh, again, asphalt, concrete, the whole work, all of it is extraordinarily expensive. A storm sewer required for all that. All, I'll, I'll just give you an example. I had to buy for myself an 18-inch plastic pipe the other day. A 20-foot piece for like $450 is probably twice of what it was a year and a half or so ago. So you start adding up $150 times, I don't know, you know, 50 pieces and that's the pipe alone. And you'd have an asphalt bill of $150,000 and your concrete is $250,000 and it's, it's very expensive. But the smaller lots do work with that and allow us to put that infrastructure in. It does give people the amenities, right? From that, it's expensive to put in, but the people who live there will benefit from the sidewalks and the street trees and this kind of development. It ties in a little bit with more the form or development of the downtown area, which we are a short walk to. So that's one principle. The other one was to sort of try to open up the center. If you go back and zoom out just a little bit, Matt. So the pond is a nice amenity. And one of the things we tried to do was to leave some open space around it. And we may need to adjust this, you know, layout a little bit as time goes on. This is just conceptual, but in principle, the thought is that either from the cul-de-sac or from the trail off the main road, you've kind of got an open, a sufficient open area where residents would feel comfortable, you know, using this pond, kind of going to as a recreational sort of measure. So that's part of the principle why the lots, the lots are indeed pushed to the edge of the property, leaving the center open, uh, to get a good, meaningful open space for the folks who live there. And it ties into the pond, which we think can become an amenity. So those are the principles behind this particular layout of that and with the smaller lot sizes to encourage a little more of a mix here potentially of housing types for this particular parcel. The other, you know, remaining questions can, you know, asked is, well, can we get a sidewalk connection down to downtown from here? And that's one of the things on our list to try to sort out. Certainly to the extent that is feasible to build, we're open to that. But in the early plat research we've done, it seems the rideaway is very narrow between, um, our site and downtown, maybe as little as 30 feet, which means it's simply not enough land to build a sidewalk without going on someone else's property. There'd be ways to address that and working with the town, but you know, we don't have the authority to, nor should be to condemn someone's property to build a sidewalk. That would have to be something worked out with the community, the locality that a private developer couldn't do. So we're, so we're going to continue looking at that and expect to have a, you know, a solid answer before the public hearings on the feasibility of that. Um, but at the moment it's a open question that we are still working through. But the layout we feel like is, um, in pretty good shape and worked with the grade reasonably and it provides that kind of, you know, central, meaningful, open space area that we think people will benefit from. So that is the summary there. I'm happy to answer questions on this one.
Trying to think where to begin. You know, the, the one, the question that always comes up is traffic. These are small streets and I know that there's going to be a V dot traffic survey, but I know that's what's on everyone's mind and it's online as well. How are we going, you know, how are you going to get large construction vehicles back there? How are these cars going to navigate our small side streets? What is your plan on that?
So there probably will be some questions from V dot and this about, there's a kind of a four-way stop going on. They're probably going to ask us about, you know, capacity or study on. But one of the things you, you have to remember is that these, while it seems like a lot of trips and sort of a a trip per hour or a trip per minute, it's not as many as you think. So if you had 48 units and if we had a mix of single family and duplex, for example, let's call that eight and a half trips a day and we'll have a peak factor about 10% to 40. And that's, that's going to be, that's about a car on average now, about a car every minute and a half. So, you know, that's traffic, but you're not going to, it's not going to be a row of 20 cars leaving all at once from a site like this. So it is, it's a number, but if you can imagine yourself standing there and on an average, your peak hour, mind you, just one hour, you know, every 90 seconds, another car comes around. That's the impact we're talking about. And so a lot of times, you know, residents and people ask the question, because you'll, V dot will say something like, nah, this is a negligible impact. And people will say, wow, how can that be? But if you think about it, if there's never more than two, three or four cars there, the odds of somebody coming along and adding to that are just not great. It's a, there are statistical models that show that in better detail than I've just described, right? Because they don't necessarily come exactly evenly spaced every, throughout the whole hour. But that's the numbers you're talking about. So it's, I think, prob, I, I don't know the history of exactly how many employees with the factory at any given time, but I, I would expect it would be, you know, less traffic than the tire factory was at various points in its operation. So that's, that's the traffic analysis. V dot will, I think, likely ask us about the, it's a four-way stop just past the library, if I remember. Is that right, Matt?
Yes.
So for, for traffic controls, part of these rezoning requests or special use permit requests may include a sort of a capacity analysis if they feel like the quantity of trips would cause a problem. And they have some basic, you know, rule of thumb math that determine if it's an issue. But again, while, um, you know, the 48 lots is, it's a lot for Scottsville. I think it would take many years to build out. In the grand scheme of traffic, it's actually not that much when you take in the context of what V dot's normally dealing with. And not to diminish it in any way, because that is, is a change, we get that. But when you start crunching the numbers, what, what V dot would say is, okay, well, the average delay will now go from 11 seconds to 13 seconds, some number like that. And so you'd be creating an additional delay of two seconds for somebody on the street. And then there's a question of, is that something that's, you know, to be concerned about and is the, is the benefit to town and to all those folks who would live on the property outweigh that delay? Again, I'm making up numbers based on experience here, so that there may need to be more map with that. But I do expect that's the, the gist of what we're going to find, the traffic study for that few residential units.
That is my impression from some of the recent traffic studies that have come into the county on similar kinds of projects. You start to get demand for turn lanes and major roadwork when the, when the number of houses is in the hundreds. But, um, for the smaller ones, they can sit off of a road, often with no change. When V dot studies the engineering on it.
Right. So the, the county's policy, for example, is it's 1,000 daily trips. So that's about, that'd be twice this, now, more than, more than twice this development would trigger their requirement for a steady. V dot's case, I think is 5,000 trips per day. VDOT's case, I think, is five thousand trips per day. Before they would require an actual study. So again, not saying this should not be thought of, it should be considered. There's no reason for, for you all to say, ah, we're not worried about it. But as someone who works in these numbers all the time, I think what you're going to find is that the impact is measured by delays or far less than you might think.
We struggled with that in our small area plan process too, that um, having a state number of five thousand trips wasn't very helpful to us. Because we were interested in how sidewalks change and what the experience is like if you're in a wheelchair or a stroller or walking a dog at much lower than five thousand. So for VDOT to say we don't care isn't good enough. We, we do care.
Right. You're certainly entitled to care at a different level than VDOT, right? That's part of your, your uh, ability as a town government to do so. Um, and there are, you know, questions like, you know, the pedestrian transportation networks and things like this are all good things to, to process and to review at this point in time. I just the traffic modeling, I think what you'll, just you'll find is it'll produce a lower sort of delay or change in conditions than one would think. Certainly, that's, doesn't mean we can't prove that or anything, but I think if you ask VDOT, that will be what they say. But again, it's appropriate for you to take their word for it, not mine, uh, and see what they have to say. But I feel that's what they're going to say. It's something along those lines.
So how, since VDOT's probably not going to be helpful, then how can we look at this and figure out? I mean, because it's, it's hard enough to get across Bird Street, going across Valley on a good day without forty-eight plus more homes. So what options do we have for looking at that? Yeah, that intersection is not great.
It, it's especially the, um, especially the turn across traffic.
Right.
When you're, when you're leaving in the morning and going north.
I also have that, that concern, just that intersection off of Valley.
Yeah.
It's already hairy and it's hard to see because cars are parked along the street there.
The, the town has some ability to work on improvements here. Absent the construction, right? If it's already a problem, we can be expressive. One of the things that came up in our small area plan conversation was um, one-way traffic patterns, right? So that the, um, so that you gain more, more space on the street, it's easier to park on the street when it's only going one way. Your four-way intersection stops being a four-way intersection. And um, if one of those turning maneuvers is trickier than the other, it goes away and somebody enters on another street. And we, we pitched that in general concept to VDOT engineers and they were very supportive of it. Uh, compared to the kinds of infrastructure changes that pour a lot of concrete and demolish and build things. Making a long way street is just paint. And they're, uh, they're very happy to consider that and see if it might help. So that's just to say, one of, one of several things we might look at, but the town has some ability to initiate that directly with VDOT, whether or not there's a construction plan. So, so even if a traffic study said there's no problem, we could still tell VDOT, well, we think there's a problem. And we want something done at this crosswalk to make it safer.
Yeah, there'll be different, you know, like exist, I think, so Valley, that's Route twenty, just make sure I remember that right. If I'm going to say Valley Street, that's yeah, so. Be, you know, there can be different considerations besides just the volume of traffic, right? Because I think all, all things being perfect, you know, VDOT would say, oh, this is no big deal. But there can be other factors and I think that's, this is, now's the time to, you know, vet those and discuss those. So that's, that's part of, probably part of this process.
And you're, you're right. We, we had the comment earlier that this is a, a national historic district. And the streets are old and they were built before there were cars at all. So, yeah, uh, VDOT will say, as it is now, this street is too narrow and these buildings are too close to the roads. They wouldn't build it this way if they were building it now. But we're not going to condemn these historic buildings to, to make the intersection work. What do we do?
Okay, let's, that's good information for us to have, that that's a movement of concern. And uh, we should, that should be passed on to VDOT and we can see what they have to say about it. Uh, there are things like sightlines and landscape. Maybe it can be modified if those are blocking views and things like that. To address some of those concerns, that, that may, those may not be the right solution, but there are opportunities in this process to, to vet those. And again, the, to look at what the difference is, the, the question really is, you know, if we have problems now, you know, how are we increasing them or not with this development, right? And may, maybe they are getting worse, maybe they would not. And that's the kind of question to ask as to what those impacts are specific to this special use permit.
Indeed. What about the, the street layout here? There's, um, you, you figure two, two or three cars per home. A hundred and fifty new vehicles is their space for them. Can you tell me anything about the, the width of this street and what do you imagine as a parking configuration? Either for driveways or garages or on-street parking?
These are, these are drawn at twenty-nine feet, um, edge to edge, which is wide enough under VDOT regulations for actually parking on both sides. Which we sort of like, because what you'll find is in a neighborhood that street width and parking on both sides. People tend to drive fairly slowly. Because you have kind of cars, you know, a car here, a car there forces you to slow down the neighborhoods. Uh, the classic example, I'm sure many of you have been to some of the neighborhoods, uh, I guess maybe in Fifeville, famously in Charlottesville, where those roads, they're sixty feet wide. And even with parking on both sides, people will drive forty miles an hour in the middle of the street. Because they feel like they can, even the speed limit is twenty-five. And so the narrower streets like you already have, really do make people slow down, which is safer for pedestrians. Uh, but it, with county regulations, they tend to want parking just on one side with twenty-nine feet. This will be a discussion to have. I, I don't think the county's regulations tend, this apply to you in the town. So that's a question more for, maybe it's a subdivision question of how you guys feel about that. But we would minimally have parking on one side and most of these units will typically have a at least a one-car garage. It's a duplex and a two-car, they have a one-car garage. And you have either, you know, parking space in front of the garage, a parking space in the garage. And then because you have a forty-foot wide lot, you have like one parking space in front of your house. I have of, of like ten or twelve feet of my frontage is occupied by my driveway, that I can park on either side of that. So I have room for one car and then I have room for, you know, a car on the driveway and a car in the garage. Duplexes might need to have two-car garages. Uh, or also a forty-foot wide lot is wide enough for the two cars off the street. So that's a, that's the unlikely setup here would be a twenty-nine foot street, but it may be if we find that parking is a concern, maybe it'll widen the street slightly to make sure we have everyone parking on both sides. Which would give essentially every house that parking space in front of their house as well. So that, that's something we haven't worked out exactly yet, but I think that's where it's headed.
And, and, and these ones where the, uh, where the houses are fronting up Bird Street, that's a very traditional look and you can imagine steps and porches, that's great. But if, um, if folks are parking out in front of their front doors or the guests are parking in front of the front doors, Bird Street starts to get pretty crowded.
It would, but you know, that is sort of a question of, is that a bad thing, right? I mean, if we have if that road is widened a little bit, wouldn't, you wouldn't park on it like it is, but if it's widened, the sidewalk installed. You know, having street parking is not a bad thing. We have street parking all down Valley Street, coming through the middle of town. And it, I think it works fine. So I, that'll be, that's kind of more of a subdivision. I think, I think the sub, Matt, the subdivisions go back to the planning commission also, if I remember right, that sidewalks and street trees are by approval of the planning commission. Is that the, the code?
Yes. So we'll, we'll have, we're having some of this discussion at, at the zoning level, but we will have another crack at this when it gets to the site plan level before any groundbreaking actually takes place. So to, to compare to um, the tiger for this market that the commission looked at recently. There was only a very general plan sufficient for the special use permit. We haven't seen no site plan yet. So there's still an opportunity to talk about um, how exactly the parking lot is configured, where the big trees go. If there's a, an outdoor lighting fixture, where does it sit in the parking lot? Those are all details that we still need to talk about. So, so not, uh, not every um, landscaping detail needs to be on this plan.
Mr. Schimper, on this plan, I appreciate that you explained about the trailer system. And, and I do thank also Kelsey Schleim for really taking that to heart, because we did spend a lot of time talking to her when we met with her about how important these trails are to the town, to the community. So thank you for that. But my question is, is that another reason why you put those, those trails there in the center of the development was to deal with just kind of distraction with those electric lines that are there because there are no intentions to actually bury those lines?
Yeah, we do not plan to bury them. So it's certainly, it does, you can't put a house in that location. But really the, the, you know, the trails in that zone are really just to kind of invite people into it. Right? It's sort of a, it's an area that, we, we like the idea of the pond sort of, opening up the pond. You kind of, as you're, as you're at the beginning of the street there, I look to the left and I drive in, there's a sort of open space and these trails in the pond, the distance, and it says, oh, you know, live here and go explore this spot. I think that's really the purpose, um, just to draw folks into it. And then the exact layout of those trails will be, you know, pinned down a little later, but uh, in general, there, uh, it's a corridor that for a variety of reasons, you know, power line included, but made sense to keep open. Uh, just so the, you know, it's no one felt, sometimes if you do your open space and it, it's behind lots or it's, you know, it's, it's people don't feel like they can get to it. Uh, but this one's wide enough that I think it's, you know, you're not in somebody's backyard, it's sufficient room for landscaping and open space to kind of draw you to the pond. So maybe it's part of the decision, but probably more evolved around an open space design we like than the power lines themselves.
Thank you.
What, what do we know at this point about the access and maintenance of these things? Sometimes it happens that a homeowner's association is responsible for the maintenance of these amenities. And they do a good job or a bad job of that in the future. And the public access to those amenities is restricted by a gate. I think, uh, your proposal doesn't say anything about uh, HOA formation versus public access and town maintenance. Why not? Or, or does that, is that something that we figure out later?
Yeah, I think that's not a closed door, one way or the other. I, I think certainly there will be an HOA for a neighborhood like this. Again, they will be not shown here. There will be stormwater facilities and other sort of common elements. Aside from just trails that everyone needs to pay for and maintenance. The streets probably end up as public, but like that alley, for example, behind lots twenty-seven, thirty-six, that would be a, a common element that HOA would maintain. So I, I have to, you know, I have to talk to um, the owner of the property about that idea of, you know, a public versus private. Of course, that goes, should the, should it become a public trail, that does become a a maintenance cost, right, for the, the town. So this goes both ways. We've, we've proposed in other developments where we said, hey, we'll, we'll give the locality this land and this trail. And they said, no, thank you. You know, we don't, we don't want to maintain it. Um, and so I think it has to, it's going to be weighed out and does it make a for the public at large, not just those folks who live in this neighborhood, is it a good amenity? And that's a just discussion that can continue to have, we can continue to have. I I can discuss that with the property owner. And if anyone has any strong opinions in the planning commission, it'd be great to hear them now about that sort of public versus private and the relationship of that open space to the, you know, town as a whole. Good time to hear people's thoughts on that.
I think it would be important to have it. Personally, I think it would be a great gesture to have it open to the community so that, you know, we're not excluding people. The, our town is extremely walkable and people drive in to walk here. And I think having this open to the public would be a good a good um, gesture personally.
I happen to agree with that. It just, um, it's another opportunity for our entire town to have another space that they can walk without having to go up to manly. And so to have that so close to them being to get onto the landing lot would be important.
Matt, does the, does the town have other, I guess you do. You have, for example, on Dr. Heart's The Prophet, so the, it's a public easement than over a, like a private HOA land or private lands that, that, you know, I, I part of the issue with these things always is honestly with the liability, right? The benefit you the government have is that, you know, if somebody's walking on a, a trail in the forest, there's limited liability to the government of somebody falling hurt themselves. And so we're just conscious of opening up our, you know, HOA to that kind of liability. As long as it's a legal mechanism where that's dealt with, I, that doesn't seem unreasonable to me. Again, I can't make that decision, but it does make some sense. Every time I've been down to this site, I have seen people actually sort of walking all over it now, um, down the field and everything. And had people done that for years and it's, it's a beautiful spot to go down and just stroll around. So I, it does make sense. And I would, we'll digest that a little bit and think about a mechanism that makes sense, but um, that's good information.
Yeah, and if the, if the town had to contract with a future HOA to assure that, we could do that, but you might want the, you might want the zoning condition upfront.
I think that we've had the conversation with the, the attorney.
Yeah. How to, how to stack that.
Are there any questions, other questions from the commission around this particular application?
Particularly in terms of revisions or changes to the plan or unanswered questions, what should, what should Mr. Schimper turn to us next month with in order to continue making progress?
What recommendations do you have in your staff report? My question is, and is it different from the Blenheim Heights?
Yeah. My, my questions have more to do with the other agency partners. Adamoral County on storm, VDOT on roads. I want to learn more about what are they going to do so that we can be certain that we're not missing something? That, yes, this is their responsibility. What are they going to do? If we have input, how do we make sure we get that to them? But keeping, staying in our lane, but also making sure that they're doing their work. My, my recommendation on both of them was generally positive. Because of the comprehensive plan alignment on village residential is intended to be the core of the town's future population growth. And we've, we've said in our comprehensive plan and the small area plan, that these are generally suitable sites for this kind of development. And the, the cluster pattern tends towards preserving more of the environment by reducing the lot size and keeping trees up in other places. It's more efficient with the infrastructure and the smaller lot size tends to make the house more affordable, which is one of our goals. The important questions to ask mainly have to do with the infrastructure impacts. Adamoral County Service Authority needs to assure that, yes, they have utility capacity and they're willing to connect to these. That doesn't seem like a problem. More of it will be VDOT. What can we learn from them upfront? As Mr. Schimper said, we could approve something and then VDOT say, no, it's not safe, you're not building it. So it would be, it would be nice to know in advance a little bit about where that stood. So I, I gave as unfavorable factors, potential traffic impacts. That's the most important thing that we need to answer. The favorable factors are the environmental, environmental quality of this layout. It's not sprawling. Um, this is better than having the same number of houses on two acres each and kicking up a lot. This is better than having the same number of houses on two acres each and taking up a lot more space. And the social demand of affordable housing supply. Prices are going up. Newcomers to the neighborhood have difficulty finding homes. And our, our plans are responsible for meeting that requirement.
There was mention of community partners like, or housing partners. So what's, is any of that? I think you mentioned, Mr. Schimper, that there might be some community partnerships here, housing partnerships. Habitat maybe?
Yeah, so Habitat has certainly expressed an interest in being in Scottsville. I don't, uh, there's no, no, no deals that are made yet in that regard, but the lot type. That's laid out particularly on Bird Street is right up their alley for the kind of development they want to do. So. While we, there's no, nothing set in stone that they would be in the neighborhood. We have certainly designed it with the opportunity where they could. Them in mind. And similar, but they're really the, the player that's expressed the most interest here and really, I think, has the product that. You know, would work for families in that lower income bracket, trying to get into their own single family home. They do a great job with their program. And they are looking for lots everywhere. So these, these certainly could be that. Nothing is set in stone in that regard, but. The layout does have that in mind as an option very much.
How do partnerships typically work with an entity like Habitat? Do you come up with an arrangement where you? Give them an allotment of houses or how does that work?
Habitat, for, as, as much as they are like up there charity, I guess, organization, they're also quite a big builder. They're one of the larger home builders around. That's a good thing. But essentially, they'll make a deal. They'll say, hey, we want to buy these lots. Me will pay X number of dollars per lot. They're probably, honestly, don't usually pay as much. They can't necessarily. But they offer, you know, more aggressive takedown schedules and when, when they're spots they want to be in. And so they're really just like any other builder comes along. They'll say, we want eight lots, or we want six. And then somebody else say, we want ten lots. And those will get built out, you know, over time by those builders.
Thank you.
I'm concerned in the economics too of this development, Mr. Schimper. I'm wondering, can you confirm to us again? With the lot string four thousand square feet, what are the actual homes? Is this like maxing out at twelve hundred square feet or what are we looking at exactly?
So, yeah, these, well, these, I think, so Kelsey, I put down email, I think Matt's twenty four foot would be the widest single family house, I think. In this scenario. And so that's a, you know, a typical unit might be a twenty four by thirty six house, which. These would be two stories. So that's, you know, that could be sixteen hundred square feet as a two story in this scenario. Or if it were a duplex, it might, they might still approach two thousand square feet, probably unlikely to be much larger than that. You would see a little larger houses up on the sixty foot wide lots. But so six fifteen, and you could see some. Twelve hundred square footers too. Most, most builders try something a little bit larger than that. They would try to do a fifteen, sixteen to two thousand square foot type of unit.
And what kind of price point are you looking at that to be?
So when you get to these size, you'll see people, again, I don't want to commit to this because I don't, you know, this is varying as things go. You'll see somebody, they'll try to start them like right at like the three hundred level or something like that. The, the target is try to get a house under three hundred. And it's very difficult. And I don't know if that's necessarily possible with the current construction environment. But that's sort of what you're targeting with this sort of product. Habitat's a whole different. Proposal. They, you know, they get houses there, I think, in like the one sixties or one eighties, but they, you know, they have a special financing program with their. Families and all this is a different situation. But for market rate housing, you know, I think it would be in that low three hundred range.
If I could add to you to do this, I'd like to recommend to you and your staff that you find a creative way. To give us a percentage of these homes, which are going to be under the three hundred mark. And whether that's two eighty or two eighty five or something, that there is body within these communities, the opportunity. For someone to get in there in under three hundred. I appreciate business and the fact that you, you know, you run a business. To make a profit, but at the same time, there has to be some of that in this community because right next to Blenheim. Is the last major construction in our town, which you know this on climbing policy. And those homes were built in the sixties. So that's the last footprint we've had made here. In this town. And we really need to see some public faith where these types of things, where people are being heard. That they really want to get into the market. They are desperate to get a foot in their first time home. Or to be able to downsize and manage their retirement in a dignified way and where they can really still afford housing. That's nice and live independently. And so if you can work with us on that and really have that as one of your goals. That would be helpful because I know it would mean a lot to people who are trying to be here and trying to, to obtain. That, a home in that price range.
Yeah, understood. I mean. I, I completely agree. It's just a matter of. The one thing we have to watch out for is that we go on for the sake of affordability, you know, have a project that no homes get built. That's the one thing I run across sometimes where you do have to remember that for every person who needs a house under three hundred thousand, which there are many. There are people who desperately want a house under three hundred and thirty thousand and desperately want a house of ten thirty thousand. So it's such, such is the, the need right now. That it's a, from a, just forget this, forget these developments and forget, you know, myself not to hurt, but from a, from a broader standpoint. Any housing in that range of like three fifty, even four hundred and below is new, is. It's unattainable for many people, you know, even at that range. Uh, but you're right, it's certainly, if there's a way to get it lower. And then, and then that can be a successful project, all the better. But, uh, yeah, the, the number of people out, I've, you know. All kind of young people who are trying to get their first house and stuff, and it's near impossible. The frustration of. Putting a bid on seven different houses and having been outbid by all cash buyers. It's just, it's tough for people and it's, it's not fair that we should do that. Housing's be done differently. And this opens a door to start to deal with some of those issues. It's not going to be the fix for affordable housing in our community, but it's a step in the right direction, I think.
I'm definitely not suggesting that the answer to affordable housing, I'm just asking that if you could look at it as. You know, a goal to maybe have two, three, five houses within these two developments that could be in that price range. The reason I'm, I'm really bringing this up to you is we worked with your company before, the town has worked with, um, their client before. And we've had some ready fire aims to Rachel's. At, at least that's what it feels like to the townspeople. And you said you. You value that feedback. And so we really want this to be a win for the town. We absolutely do. We're willing to work with you and to see how we can make that happen. And so I just wanted to bring that out before, you know, your opportunity to speak to us. Came to a close, just to kind of maybe plan to see that, you know, what we can do to really make this a win for the town in every way. Would be so great because people are not used to seeing construction. They're not used to having, you know, a big parcel of land. Born up and see these trucks on the road along with all the other ones we have coming through town. There's a lot of issues for our town. And we all care about that, those issues deeply. And so I just wanted to kind of plan that safe with you again.
Very good.
Commissioners, are there any other comments that you have tonight? Questions?
I, I was actually, I'm kind of disappointed that the price point on these homes on Bird Street is still so high. I was hoping with the, the, the smaller lot sizes. And the fact that we're putting forty eight or proposing to put forty eight homes in there, that it, they would be more affordable for people. I don't think three hundred thousand. Is affordable housing. And I'm, I'm not suggesting that you're suggesting it is. I, I just don't think this answers. The need for affordable housing in Scottsville. And that is something we have been hearing over and over again, is such a high priority. And I don't think either of these projects answers that, that need. So maybe. In addition to these projects, we also need to be pursuing something else because that, that is way out of the price range for most people.
So just running some numbers, a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar house with ten percent down, I'm sorry, not ten percent. Ten thousand, don't know how you get that, but ten thousand down, a monthly payment on that would be two thousand dollars. You'd need an income of. Help me. Two thousand.
Times thirty six, seventy two thousand.
Yeah, thirty six, because it should be three times, so seventy two thousand. So two, yeah, two, how, two, um. Adults with an income of, say, thirty six thousand each. I mean, it, it kind of scares me a little, the number, but, you know, I mean, seventy two thousand, what is our median income in the area? Fifty six thousand?
And so we, yeah, so the, the affordable houses here, the affordability that we have comes from the houses that we have being older.
Right.
Houses, if they're falling in prices, they get older.
Right.
Or the market wants a house with more bathrooms than what this fifty year old house was built with. As the older ones that are smaller are falling in price, but becoming the affordable housing.
Right.
And Scottsville is, you know, it's great that we can offer that. It's hard to get that same number with new construction, as you're saying, without special financing assistance, like what those partners do. Or a different building, like. You know, a large condo building. You can, you can get a two hundred thousand dollar condo in Charlottesville, but that's a different type of structure. I, I, I think Mr. Schimper is giving the numbers correctly about why does it cost to build a house what it does? And, you know, market, when we're, when we're paying what we are for concrete and for electricians, it's hard to build a new house cheaper than that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can give you a, a real world example of that. I'm building a duplex in Charlottesville actually right now. And so it's just two units. And the cost of, of just the sticks and bricks in labor to build the units. Is a little over four hundred thousand dollars. So that's not including any, any outside work whatsoever. No sidewalks, no streets. No water tap fees, no sewer. That's just the sticks and bricks to build it. So. You know, if you look at, if you look at that as a, that's a, that's like a, those are about twelve, thirteen hundred square foot units apiece. So if you try to give us a fifteen hundred square foot house, there's, you know, two hundred thousand dollars in construction costs. You gotta pay for the lot. You gotta pay for the engineer who does the design, works, all those costs add up into it. And that's, that's honestly why it's, it's so difficult. My friend Nicole Scro, if you look on Twitter, you'll find her. Is often trying to figure out ways to build housing more affordably. And she's just. It's just, it's about impossible without, without some kind of subsidies or partnerships. And there are great programs out there. Virginia Housing has an awesome program for small apartment buildings that we're looking at for some projects. It does get you some great affordability. But, you know. The guy framing the building still needs to get paid and they're getting paid well. Now, that's good. Because that, that, you know, that, that person who formerly couldn't afford a three hundred thousand dollar house now can afford one. So, you know, but it makes the house more expensive. I, I wish I had a, an answer to the problem because it's something that we work on all the time, but. I think delivering houses that blow three hundreds still is very beneficial for the, you know, community at large and the housing stock. And it does prevent houses that are less than that from accelerating in price. When you bring in, you know, so the house that right now, if it's two fifty, it'll keep rising in price if there's not enough supply to prevent that. So you do save some affordable housing by bringing in some above that price point.
Is there a way to build these communities without the added HOA fees on top of the mortgage? And the PMI that people are going to be paying and, and all of these different.
Not really, uh, because the stormwater regulations are what they are. We have to create, you know, stormwater facilities that cost, you know, for this. Bird Street, you're probably looking at three to four hundred thousand dollars in stormwater. And what happens is the HOA has to have reserve funds to basically replace that in twenty years. They have a sort of replacement life. So because the cost of this, or the environmental management, which again, has an important place, because that's there, it essentially gets carried on via the HOA. You know, doing things like public roads helps, but stormwater facilities are ultimately going to cost money and. It's not, there's no way to avoid it, uh, in circumstances.
Any other questions or comments, commissioners? Mr. Schimper, thank you for your time tonight and for your application. We have a lot to consider here. I just want to put it to the commissioners now. Do you feel like you have enough information? Do you make a motion on this? Or where are we at?
Just for clarification, we would be motioning to hold a public hearing on this.
Well, public hearing will be happening later on in, what, December sixth? Is that where we have to play it for?
You, you could, you could call it at one, you have to hold a public hearing before making a recommendation. You can hold that public hearing at any of your upcoming meetings, October, November, December. You have to report something out to town council before that third one.
Right. What motion do we have tonight for consideration to table this? To have further discussion at a special meeting and to gather more information? Where are we going?
Yes, thank you.
And this fits in with our village residential cluster plan, right?
Yeah.
It, it meets the text of the ordinance, yes.
Cluster is in and of itself special use, and that's why we're here.
All time.
But otherwise, this fits in with what we had outlined.
Yes.
And again, there's no, we talked about the, I guess, the lack of options for another access road. Because that's all privately owned land up here. So, so to be clear. Have you had, Mr. Schimper, have you had any discussions with the land donors? What is this going to be? This is going to be.
The name of the north?
West, northwest?
Yeah. Clark, Clark and Marshall Hogan and Grace Knights are the neighbors.
Just thinking about traffic and access roads and lack of them. So I was just wondering, by any chance, you've had contact with any of the neighbors?
Well, I have not. I, I can tell you, we, you know, we've sort of asked that question over time. And the short answer is if you look at the distance from the nearest public road. Headed south towards our site, we'd have to sell these houses for like five hundred and fifty thousand dollars apiece to pay for the road. To get down. Essentially, the, the, even if we were given permission, the cost of that infrastructure would blow the project up. You wouldn't be, we just wouldn't build it. Couldn't be done. So it's a long ways. I, I suspect, you know, I don't know what motivation the neighboring property would have and granting us a free ride away to the middle of their property either.
Well, I certainly have some follow up staff work. Abs, absent any motion, it stays as old business. And, and I'll get you answers on V dot, stormwater. And some of these other items to keep it moving forward. And certainly continue the, the public outreach. The online discussion has been active and I expect we'll see it continue around the neighborhood as well.
We need to see if we've created schedule of public hearing because I think that's going to be vital to get some more feedback.
If, if you wanted to call your public hearing for your next meeting, you could do that. And then digest the results of the, you're not required to take your final vote right after your public hearing. If you wanted to have your public hearing sooner rather than later and then negotiate and discuss based on that for two more months, good.
It's going to be necessary to have that along with the reports.
Okay.
That we have that feedback from the public and then we can really take it into deliberations and. It's going to be necessary to have that along with the reports, that we have that feedback from the public, and then we can really take initiatives deliberations and. And see where we're at.
You'd rather have the hearing sooner rather than later?
Personally, yes.
Well, and, and also, I think whatever information you have, what, whatever you gather is going to be useful to share at the meeting, so as long as you think you can get answers. In the next month.
Now, this, it's a, it's an unprecedented project for Scottsville, but, but the county staff is working more of these, and I. Don't think this is a terribly complicated proposal for them, so if we have questions about how does this work, what does this look like, I think those are pretty straightforward answers for them. Um, we have the, I have the benefit, the, the, the problem. Inexperience on this, um, but it's, it's the benefit of an innocent question, how does this work?
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's definitely been enough developments in our county for you to get help for many.
Yeah, we can see examples.
Then I really might, it would be my thought that we move this to, you know, old business immediately, this new business, old business, and then we just. And do the information gathering and set the public here, is that possible?
Yes, um, you, you can, you can vote to call your public hearing for your next meeting, if, if you, if you'd like.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we hold a public hearing on this, these two plans. These two special use for this.
Do you want October fourth, your next regular meeting?
Is that a holiday?
No. Oh, excuse me.
I'm, I'm not the best at, and my calendar doesn't say, so does that mean there's no holiday?
I can look, um. That is not a holiday, I think Columbus is the eleventh.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. All right, so that's my motion that we have a public hearing on October fourth.
I second the, the motion.
All in favor?
I.
I.
I care, so there will be a public hearing on these two proposals, October fourth. And in the meantime, we'll do a lot of information gathering to support any of those questions that come forward, yes. And there being no other new business, then, Mr. Schip, thank you for your time, we appreciate it, I'll be in contact.
I thank you all, nice evening.
Thank you.
And given if there's no other new business, thank you again for your time and all of your comments, we value it strategically. And for everybody else that's joined on the same tonight, and all of you, yes, thank you. And do I wish to adjourn?
I motion to adjourn.
A second.
All in favor, I, I care, good night, thank you.
Good night, thank you.